It is 6:30 on April 3rd. I am calling the Northborough School Committee Opening Meeting, School Choice Public Hearing, into session. So I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Martino.
Sure, so I'm pleased to share the annual school choice information for the committee and the community. And I'll provide a brief overview and then later on in the agenda, the school committee will take it up for further discussion. So, school choice is an inter-district school choice program under Mass General law and has been in place in the Commonwealth since 1991. It allows a parent or guardian to enroll his or her child in a school district other than the district in which the child resides. Under the school law of choice, all school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate unless a school committee opts out in school choice. A receiving district can withdraw from school choice only if a school committee holds a public hearing, which we are doing this evening, on the topic and then votes to withdraw from school choice program prior to June 1st. The way school choice works is the school tuition is $5,000 for a regular education program student. In comparison, the per people expenditure for the Northborough Public Schools in FY-22 was $20,411. So there is a discrepancy between the school choice funding we get for a school choice student versus a typical per people expenditure. With school choice, the school committee may specify the schools and grades in which seats are available. Therefore, the school committee can limit school choice to certain grades. For example, if there is space in a particular grade, like first grade, the school committee could say there are five school choice seats in that particular grade level. And then when admitting students through school choice, under the Mass General law, districts cannot consider or discriminate based on race, color, religiousities, national origins, sex, gender identity, age, sexual orientation, gender, ethnic performance, physical handicap, special needs, academic performance, or proficiency in English language. And also, if the school committee chooses not to opt out and the number of applicants for school choice exceeds the number of seats available, it then becomes a lottery. So it's a lottery system. And the selection process must take place prior to July 1st. And then again, assuming there are seats available prior to November 1st. So, in summary, the advantages are that districts do receive additional funding, $5,000 per student. It is a means for many districts to generate revenue. And it also allows districts to, for flexibility and enrollment declines, accepting students in a grade level where there is space. And again, this is a year-to-year decision to opt out. And then the disadvantages is the $5,000 per people expenditure is far less than the district expenditure. Acceptance is by lottery, so again, it depends on the students who apply for school choice and how many can be accepted. But there are situations where you could accept a student who has significant needs and it will cost far greater than $5,000 to educate that child. Once a student is accepted, the student remains in grade, in district through grade eight. And then lastly, a student can require significant resources.
Rick, if you move the mic closer to your chair.
We can't hear a word.
You can't hear, yeah.
What if they just all moved their seats up like 10 feet?
Do you guys want to move your chairs closer? I'm sorry, I apologize. This is one of the downsides of this room.
And then if we, there's some like buzzing, if we close that closet door, is something, is there some machinery in that door?
It's a light.
Okay.
It seems it's a light.
Because I typically don't hear that, and I'm hearing it tonight.
I hope you're able to see that.
We could probably angle that.
I'm going to angle it a bit.
It's very big.
Just a little bit more this way, Bryce.
Was the committee able to hear?
Yeah, we were able to hear you, yes, yep. It's the acoustics of this beautiful building.
Use your teaching voice.
Yeah.
So would it be helpful if I ran through it quickly again?
If this is what you just went through? No, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
It is the public, it is the public portion, so if you would like us to go over it, we can review it.
Okay.
Do you want them just to go over?
Sure.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure it's all.
We'll see if I do a better job the second time. So, school choice, so school choice has been in place in the Commonwealth since 1991 and allows a parent or guardian to enroll his or her child in a school district other than the district in which the child resides. And then, under the school choice law as amended in 1993, all school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate in and to admit non-resident students through school choice. So all districts across the Commonwealth are considered school choice districts unless a district withdraws from school choice. So, a district can withdraw from school choice only if a committee holds a public hearing, which is what we're doing this evening, on this issue, and then votes to withdraw from the school choice program prior to June 1st. For those districts who do not opt out of school choice and accept school choice students, they receive $5,000 per student. And in comparison, the per people expenditure for the Northborough Public Schools in FY-22 was a little over $20,000. School committees may specify the schools and grades in which seats are available for non-resident students. Therefore, the school committee can limit the admission of non-resident students through school choice to specific grades, programs, or schools. And when admitting students through school choice under Mass General law, we have to obviously follow our nondiscrimination policies. If the number of applicants exceeds the number of available seats, so if you have six seats and eight applicants for those six seats, the selection of students must be on a random basis. The selection process must take place before July 1st, and again, assuming there are seats available prior to November 1st. And just the advantages and disadvantages. The advantages for some districts is that it's another revenue generation, so it's $5,000 per student. It allows flexibility and enrollment declines, and it's a year-to-year decision to opt out. And the disadvantages is that the $5,000 is far less than the actual cost to educate a student in the district, acceptance by lottery. And once a student is accepted, the student remains in the district through grade eight, and the potential for a student to require significant resources. And I will turn it back over to the chair.
Okay. I think I open up for audience questions? Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions regarding school choice? Seeing no questions for school choice, I am going to close the school choice public hearing at 6:40 PM. And I am going to call into session the Northborough School Committee Scheduled Meeting of April 3rd. I want to make note that we have some remote participation tonight. Joan, one of the committee members, is virtual. We also have Keith Lavoie, Becky Pellegrino, and Stephanie Reinhardt that are virtual, we attending. So we will do roll call vote for anything that has to be voted for this evening. First on our agenda is a retiree recognition. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Martino.
Michelle, do you want to join us as well? So, this evening, we have Dave Anastas, who has retired, he's now a retiree, for how many days?
Fifteen.
Fifteen days.
I think.
So he looks more relaxed and settled in.
How's retirement? Do you want to come out of it? Do you want to come back?
I highly recommend it.
So, Dave has been an instrumental member of the Northborough community in the school system. He has been the head custodian at Melican for a number of years and has done an outstanding job. He's always taken great pride in his work, and it shows. He treats students exceptionally, he treats teachers exceptionally, and he really is a role model for all of our students, faculty, and staff, and exemplifies the district's core values. So, although we're glad that you were able to retire, we're sad that you're no longer going to be present day-to-day, and we just want to thank you for all of your years of service.
Thank you.
And we do have a small token of our appreciation for your years of service.
Thank you.
And, Michelle, I'm not sure if you want to say anything?
Sure. So, Dave worked at Melican for almost 14 years, and his positive energy and his willingness to collaborate and be flexible really stood out. I remember when we added some sports that required the lining of fields, Dave willingly went out, no matter what the temperature, and lined some fields, though initially maybe not exactly accurate in terms of measurement. He learned on the job and did those very willingly. I think one of my most memorable times was during COVID, when things first closed down. One of the only people here was Dave. When the rest of us were home and scared and nervous, Dave came and did what he needed to do. And as some of the adults got back in the building, just really, again, a lot of unknowns, but just stepped up and filled in. When our facilities manager retired, before we had a new one, Dave stepped up then as well. And one of the other things that Dave was instrumental in was helping us shift our graduation ceremony from inside to outside, which has been a huge improvement. So, I can't thank Dave enough for everything that he's done. He always has taken pride in this building. Even today, when he walked in, he asked me a few questions about the building and noticed some things that needed to be done, so I appreciate that. So, I definitely miss Dave, and I keep hoping he'll get on the sub-list, but it's probably a little bit too soon for that. Thank you, Dave, we do miss you already.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we do have cake.
And there's cake.
So, we'll take a five-minute pause? Is that okay? All right.
Six fifty-three and we are back in session. Thank you very much. Audience sharing is the first on our agenda. Anything? Do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, alright, great. Moving on to new business. Unfortunately, Mr. McInerney could not be here this evening. So we will reschedule and have him attend at a later date. Principal report. Mrs. Stacy Mahoney, would you like to come up to the table? And do you want Lisa to come? You can come closer to us if you want. You can come closer if you want.
Yes, I?
Because there's the microphone right there, so yeah.
Talking to the mic.
Then we'll just go right in.
Perfect. Alright, so I'm just gonna jump right into the principal reports. Starting with the Lincoln Street. Last Wednesday, we sent our kindergarten students out into the world on their first field trip. Students and staff attended a performance at the Hanover Theater entitled "The Magic School Bus Lost in Space." The feedback from staff, students, and families was that it was amazing and exciting experience and some of the kids actually thought they were in Paris or New York City. This week, our grade five student council has organized a personal care items drive to benefit our local Northborough Food Pantry. On Friday, members of the fifth grade chorus performed a rendition of "Let's Dance" by David Bowie on the radio station WKKL FM. And on Monday, Lincoln Street School will safely and cautiously participate in an optional solar eclipse watch party. Next week, we'll have a school-wide assembly on April 12th to celebrate and highlight academic accomplishments such as ST Math, MCAS, and Witten Wisdom. Additionally, students and staff will engage in some top-secret friendly competitions. I'm intrigued. On April 25th, Lincoln Street will host a tech talk for parents and guardians of students in grades three through five. The presentation will focus on topics such as technology, safety, digital footprint, social media, and striking a balance. That's it for Lincoln Street. Moving on to Peaslee. Our third grade students and staff also attended a performance at the Hanover Theater entitled "The Magic School Bus Lost in Space." It was a very special treat for everyone. Thank you to the Peaslee PTO for supporting our transportation during this amazing field trip. All-Town Band is in full swing. Fifth graders from across all four elementary schools have been traveling to Melikan every Wednesday to rehearse with each other in preparation for the spring concert on May 15th at 7:00 PM. All schools have been busy preparing and conducting this year's MCAS assessments. Students across Northborough in grades three through eight will be taking part in the ELA Math and Science and Technology and Engineering MCAS tests. Students will test during the month of April and May. We will hold a sports and hobbies on April 12th. Students are encouraged to wear their professional or personal sport-themed or hobby wear. We also encourage students and families to bring non-perishable items to contribute to our monthly food pantry to support the Northborough Food Pantry. Thank you to the fifth grade student leaders for assistance with this important drive. And we look forward to our next all-school community meeting featuring our fourth grade play about kindness and acceptance called "Rainbowland," and that's on April 12th. We'll be honoring members of our school who have demonstrated inclusivity, creating amazing artwork, and met their puzzle goals in ST Math. Alright, moving on to Z School. The third through fifth grade drama club students at Z have been working hard to prepare their performance, which will take place this Friday, April 5th. They will be performing "The Jungle Book" for the whole school at 2:00 and then two sold-out performances for families that evening. A big thank you to Mr. Arnold for his time and dedication to making this program a success. On Friday, April 26th, Z will be having an author visit from, I cannot pronounce this, Fay Creed? Okay, who lives in Southborough. Thank you to the PTO for their generous support. Fay has written several picture books with more on the way. The students are looking forward to hearing what she has to say about writing and publishing, the writing and publishing process. Also, on the 26th, the ZPTO will be holding their annual Kids Fest. This family fun after-school event is always a highlight for students and there will be games, bounce houses, food, raffles, and more. We're hoping for great weather and looking forward to a wonderful time connecting as a school community. Moving on to Melikan. Our grade six and grade seven fun nights in March were successful. They were well-attended and students enjoyed playing basketball and soccer, dancing to the DJ, and eating lots of candy. We're thankful to the staff and parent chaperones and all proceeds benefited the PTO. On March 26th, we held our music and arts showcase. Many students and their families attended as students showed off their talents. Our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders completed session one of their ELA MCAS today. Want to thank Kyle Parsons, Brian Lawrence, and the cafeteria staff for feeding two grades at one time to help accommodate the timing of MCAS, and Bud Richardson and the custodial staff for helping find tables and chairs to feed nearly 370 students at one time. Next Wednesday, April 10th, we welcome a visiting musician to work with our Chamber Ensemble. After workshops during the day, we will be treated to a concert at 7:00 PM. Alright, Proctor School. During the month of March at Proctor School, students engaged in many exciting activities. One highlight was the return of the Harmony Brigade. They're a local quartet who treated us to some tunes during our student lunches. And in academic news, of course, we have our ST Math and Gigi excitement around the March Mathness Challenge, which is coming to an exciting end. So Mrs. Iainakoni, to motivate our students, introduced brackets and assigned each homeroom a color instead of using teachers' names. So this approach helped students and staff and kept them guessing. So currently, two classes represented by the colors yellow and pink have advanced to the finals. We don't know who they are, but we will find out. So Mrs. Iainakoni is really keeping that secret. Our fourth graders will be going on a field trip next week to the Concord Museum. Thank you to the fourth grade teachers for organizing the trip and to the Proctor PTO for supporting in funding the transportation. And also during the month of March, all of our K through five students engaged in the science and nature enrichment activities through Hands-on Nature. Students were really excited to explore owl pellets and earthworms. Lastly, our Proctor Spirit Committee organized a successful food drive to support the Northborough Food Pantry. This year, our Spirit Committee has demonstrated their commitment not only to Proctor School, but to our community as well. And we look forward to continuing and engaging in more opportunities to give back. And that is it.
Thank you so much. I heard about the MCAS lunch today. Did you hear about that today?
No.
Yeah, Addie said it was very loud. Lots of tables and chairs and I chose to eat in the hallway. Alright, no questions, we can move on to PTO if you're ready.
Alright, I'm ready. Hi, everybody. My name is Lisa Smith. I'm PTO president at Proctor School. So I just have a couple of quick slides with a little overview of what we've been working on. So if you go to the next slide, please. So as you can see, I'm president. Right now, our vice president is vacant, but I have a lovely treasurer and a secretary on board with me. So we're chugging through. Expenses as of now for 2023 to 2024. We have some pretty low ones there. We've done a fair amount of enrichment. We've done a lot of teacher appreciation this year. And at this point, our biggest expense is the field trip buses. Not everyone has gone on a field trip yet, but we've budgeted, I think it's $592 per bus per field trip, hoping that everyone will take advantage of that. We've done a fair amount of teacher grants. We've also, everyone got a gift card when they came back from the beginning of the school. We're looking forward to Teacher Appreciation Week. And we actually have, we'll probably spend a little bit more than that, but that's all upcoming. We had a back-to-school dance. We have some overhead we participate in, but it's about $12,000 in spending this year. Little bit of enrichment in there. It's a little bit of a quieter year this year, obviously being slightly understaffed. But our whole idea is to keep the ball rolling, to keep, you know, the excitement there. And whatever we spend, we just would like to be able to refill and keep our money there for when something exciting does come along. Okay, so next slide. So we made sure that our staff is still appreciated, so they had a welcome-back lunch. We gave them Amazon gift cards. We always offer teacher grants. Everyone applies for them. And I mean, if you apply, you basically get the grant. We review them, but we almost always. And actually, we still have some money left in that, that we're more than happy to continue to give to the teachers. We had a holiday lunch for them right before we took break and looking forward to five days of teacher appreciation. When we first came back to school, we had DJ Mike, so we had a back-to-school dance. We also did Walk to School Day in October, I think, and we'll probably do that again in the spring. We hosted a trunk-or-treat, which is a really easy, low-stress way for us to get everybody excited. We started it with COVID and we keep it going just because it's a pretty fun little afternoon. Claytime, we always have them come and we host a pottery night right around the holidays so kids can decorate ornaments, decorate plates, that sort of thing. That happened to be the same night that we also hosted our holiday shop in our library so kids can go and buy little tchotchkes or things. It's a very polarizing night. You either love it or you hate it. I love to give the kids the opportunity for it and pass the tchotchkes on later. Like Ms. Mahoney mentioned, in March, we had Hands-on Nature come. Heather is a local mom and teacher from up in Berlin. And she came on three separate occasions. I got to buy the owl pellets on Amazon, you guys, let me tell you. And my son brought home a baggie with a skull in it. It was such a delight. And then coming up on Saturday, we have our Spring Fair and the end of our online auction. This is one of our bigger fundraisers of the year where we have fun. It's carnival style. Every school does this, so I'm looking forward to 2:05 on Saturday when that is, all the fun has been had. And then a little bit later this month, we'll be hosting a musical bingo night for the first time. So that should be a lot of fun. And then as far as fundraisers go, we're always trying to keep the ball moving. Bay State Textiles continues to be pretty decent for us. We've hosted only one restaurant night this year. Those are pretty easy, but it just kind of fell through the cracks. Coffee Pond at EPI, we always end up getting a little bit of money for our back-to-school kits, which as a parent, I love. And I also, I love Coffee Pond. I really like the pictures that they create. I like the yearbooks that they create. And I love that we get a little bit of money from them. We tried a fundraiser with Nothing Bunt cakes. It was, they were delicious. We did it right around Thanksgiving. Not really that great of a fundraiser, but it was something fun to try. Something else that actually came through our treasurer and my husband is a company called Benevity. And so my husband works for Dell and they are really into donations and volunteer hours. And so he earns money through his employer that he can then donate to any nonprofit that he wants. Proctor, I happen to put onto Benevity, and he can then donate that money directly to Proctor. So we've raised between two employees, I think almost $500, that on Giving Tuesday, I believe it was, some companies actually doubled or matched what was donated. So I think it's a really cool way. It's hard to educate people. It's a very specific employee benefit, but if it's one we can take advantage of, I'm very happy to. Read-a-thon, we hosted our first read-a-thon this year and that was actually a lot of fun. We put it together. It was an event. Ms. Mahoney did a ton of work with it. It was a pretty exciting day. We raised a little bit of money with that. It was a fun way to get them going. And like I said, Spring Fair's coming up. And then we usually host our fun run in the fall, but unfortunately with the construction with the roof, we were unable to. So we're gonna try and do it a little bit later, right before Memorial Day this year. We have a lot of fundraisers kind of on the back end, so we'll see how it goes. But it's still fun. It's still a fun event for them to run around. So we're hoping, we're estimating, we'll fundraise about $13,000 total. Of course, the Spring Fair and the Fun Run, those are estimated at this point. But it's pretty much what we spend is what we're trying to replenish. And that's where we are, Proctor. Anyone has any questions? Let me know.
Well, it sounds like you're still doing a lot for just having three board members. So I just want to say thank you for all the work you're doing because you're really making a lot of memories for these children to have spring fling and all the other experiences you're allowing them, especially for paying for the buses as well for their field trips, which they'll always remember. So thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Can't wait for the Spring Fair.
I know.
Everybody's welcome. It's not just Proctor.
We'll be there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in tonight. We rewarded you with cakes. Take them on your way out. Take some for your family. And we have Peaslee.
Hi, everybody. I'm stepping in for Laura Werch tonight, who's unable to come. So just like Lisa did, I'm just gonna read through some of the slides. I see a lot of common themes, which are great to see, and picked up some ideas from her, so I'll bring them back to my committee. So we have some board members.
If you could just hang on one second.
Yeah, sorry.
Too many screens.
Greg, I feel like you have a few too many windows.
Close the right windows.
I know.
Almost there, hang on a second.
Don't worry about it.
Alright, now we're ready.
Alright, thank you. So we have a good amount of committee members, some who have been there year after year. We do try to have people shadow each other so that the transition is less daunting, so that people are more comfortable to join the committee. So right now, Laura Werch is our chair. Larissa Smulon is the co-chair, so she's the one who's in training. Corinne Frick is our communications person. Amanda Jabeau is our treasurer. Andy Donay and Carrie Brooks are our teacher representatives who attend our monthly meetings and give really good feedback to the committee about some of the teachers' needs or also the committee will run some things by them to get their feedback. And then we have Ella Preslin and Daisy Middleton, who oversee our enrichments. So here is our budget for the year. As you can see, it's a total of $25,060. We have a hefty budget for enrichment programs, but are constantly trying to get some free programs in as well as some grants and gifts, which we've been pretty successful about. We have a $3,000 field trip budget that usually includes one bus trip. Our grants and reimbursements are very similar to Proctor's. Our classroom supplies, those are the initial beginning of the year where they will gift teachers some additional funding so that they can buy some things to start the year. And then we have our library support, so that's for books each year. And that usually comes from the proceeds of our book fairs. We have our spirit days that we sometimes like to buy special things or have events during school that pertain to that. And the PTO's been really great about supporting that. We had a cultures, a celebration of light around the holidays. And we darkened up the room and the kids had glow sticks. And it was just, we talked a lot about how the cultures that celebrate holidays during that time all unify by the theme of light. And so we really had some fun with the kids with that. Our teacher appreciation, the PTO always offers, and we'll go into that a little more, but just ways to kind of just contribute to the teacher's spirit and to thank them for all their hard work. And then our fifth grade graduation miscellaneous funds are usually appropriated every year. So a variety of fundraisers. We have a gift card fundraiser where parents buy gift cards and then we get a certain amount from each of those companies. Our Fun Run, we did that in the fall. And we used to use a company to do that, but we realized that we could do it in-house and really rev up the revenue. We have a read-a-thon as well. Our silent auction is part of our welcome-back community celebration. And we introduce new parents during that time. Our restaurant nights, our raffle baskets that happen during our winter fest. We usually try to do a winter theme. And we have different stations throughout the school, all pertaining to that. We have the textile bin, which is the clothing donation bin that we get proceeds for. And then we also have a direct donations. We find that some parents really prefer to give a general donation every year instead of having to participate in all of the fundraisers. But one good thing about, I think, all of our PTOs is we're starting to really be smart about our choices and not have just a lot of things, but to really streamline the things that work and so that parents aren't being asked to participate over and over. We also have a lot of in-town and local area sponsors who contribute throughout the year, including recently, we just got a Northborough Garden Club grant to help with landscaping around our new school sign. But there's a, you know, the enrichment committee and the communications director, they all help to try to generate some more businesses each year. Our enrichments are a big part of what we do and offer to the students with the funding from the PTO. Children's dentistry comes to the kindergartners. We had a great, the Karate Center brought an anti-bullying session that I highly recommend. The person who ran that was really well-versed in what students' questions would be and did a really nice job. We have pumpernickel puppets who come for our incoming kindergartners to join our current kindergartners as one of their experiences their first time into Peaslee, so that they enjoy that together. We have, we visit a big, big fifth grade field trip where we go to Gillette and we talk about concussions and helmet design. Cheryl Fay does a lot of historical women. I guess she's a caricature and each year we pick a couple of different ones. Eyes on Owls is another fantastic one where a husband-and-wife team come with like several owls and they're just beautiful animals and they have a book that goes with it. Our Animal Adventures, where students can touch and feel. We have our Tech Magnet Matters where it's similar to the Discovery Museum where they come and they do some hands-on activities with students. Our meteorologist from Channel Five came again this year. Central One Money Trail, they come and talk to the kids about how good saving habits can really pay off. We also have, you know, a couple of authors who come to us. And then each grade, we try to have them participate in at least two enrichments each. Our grants and reimbursements, those are the things, again like Lisa shared, where teachers will put in things that are above and beyond what they like to do or that we provide that they like to do to make it special each year. Our eclipse glasses have been purchased. Our all-school meeting for that holiday celebration. Our fourth grade fair posters, our anchor chart whiteboards where teachers can now use their anchor charts with our new Witten Wisdom program where they can wipe it off and reuse. And it really is, the kids really love that. We have our Read Across America refreshments, our classroom supplies and reimbursements. We also really try to bring parents and the community in each year. So we've done things like their back-to-school picnic and ice cream truck, our Apex Family Fun Days, our celebration books where families donate in honor of their children to the library. Our Fun Run, our Halloween and Valentine recess crafts where parents come in, they volunteer and they do fun, different things at recess with children. Our monthly spirit days, our winter fest, going to the Railers game where our fifth graders do the singing of the National Anthem and families gather, and then our end-of-year party. Then we have our teacher appreciation. There are many things they do, but these are the highlights. Our recovery breakfast after parent conferences, our holiday lunch, the Whoopi Pie truck during conferences in the spring, our Teacher Appreciation Week, and our end-of-year luncheon. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has. And I can give any feedback that you have to our committee.
Please pass on our appreciation for all that they do. It's hard work.
Yeah.
We know it's hard work. We appreciate it. The things that they're able to provide for the teachers help our budgets season and things.
Helps with the creativity, right, to do extra special things. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We have, next on-
All right, uh, we have, next on the agenda, the ELA presentation. You can walk slowly. You've got it all queued up.
Yeah, so give me two seconds to... All right. Thank you for your patience. It's hard to run a meeting without tech support.
You're doing great.
You're amazing.
So this evening we have... Later. This evening we have Megan Kelty, who is our English Language Arts Coordinator, um, to provide the committee and the community with an update around ELA. Um, I will share that Megan and educators across the district have been working tirelessly to implement the Wit and Wisdom curriculum, and from my experience, it has been one of the best implementations that I've seen in my career, thanks to teachers and Megan's leadership. So I just wanted to share that before she began her presentation.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so I'm really happy to be here tonight. I am going to try my best to keep it to a reasonable amount of time. There's so much happening in ELA in Northborough. I feel like I could go on and on, but Greg will keep me in check. I think. So, um, we can go on. So, uh, what I'm going to share tonight is really relevant to our strategic objectives of empowering learners, which has to do with our implementation of instructional practices and really equity of opportunity, making sure that we are giving rigorous experiences to all of our learners. So as Greg alluded to, our implementation K through five since August of Wit and Wisdom has been a focus of our work. I would like to echo what Greg said and give a huge shout-out to all of the educators in Northborough and the principals, two of whom are here tonight, especially our ELA leaders, our ELA teacher leaders. Um, everyone has truly been working tirelessly and has shown such dedication to this implementation, and it's been, um, really, really, um, wonderful to see, so just to applaud that. Um, but with Wit and Wisdom, one of the reasons we chose it last year as on our curriculum committee was really the opportunities it provides to students, to all students, to grapple with complex grade-level text and to really engage in rigorous thinking and rigorous learning. And we are seeing that now in, in happening, um, in, in grades K through five. So one of the highlights of Wit and Wisdom is that it incorporates lots of different texts into this, into the learning, so it's not just a book curriculum. Students are certainly have their hands on a lot of beautifully illustrated nonfiction and fiction picture books and also rich chapter books at the older levels, but they're also engaging with poetry, historic documents, historic audio, historic video, all kinds of, um, historic artwork. So lots of different ways they're engaging, and that also provides a lot of access points to our students. So maybe they're not, um, they, they prefer to engage in, through a visual, um, access point. Um, and one of the other things that I wanted to share is Wit and Wisdom really does incorporate a lot of higher-level thinking questions for kids. So every module of study has an, an overarching essential question, which is really asking the students to consider big ideas. So it's not a yes or no question, but questions such as, um, um, I can give an example from currently kindergarten, as in the essential question of what makes a good story, or second grade, what was life like in the West for early Americans? So questions that as the students engage with these texts and have these conversations, they really, um, they really get to those answers on their own through exploration and gathering evidence. Okay. So we have, as I said, the teachers, the educators have done so much this year to get Wit and Wisdom rolling, and that work will continue into year two of implementation. Uh, it has been a focus of the teacher PLCs this year. It has also been a focus of our March Professional Development Day. There were two sessions offered that day for Wit and Wisdom study and collaboration. We've had a couple of visits from our Great Minds coach. Great Minds is the company that publishes Wit and Wisdom, and we have a third visit coming, um, later this month, and our coaches have also helped us set some goals for next year of how to keep the implementation rolling along, and we are now planning for early training, or I should say training in early next year for a year two, which will focus on writing and really, um, so fine-tuning that. It's not just Wit and Wisdom though in ELA. There's a lot of other things happening too. So as you probably remember from last year, we do have our project Read Phonics and our Live Letters in kindergarten and in third through third grade, um, which is teaching the foundational skills of literacy. So when we think about spelling and figuring out how to decode those words, how to read them, lift them off the page, we wanted to find something to continue into our fourth and fifth grades that was going to be, um, consistent and rigorous for all students. So we have this early or late winter, early spring, launched our early adopters of our fourth and fifth grade spelling and phonics, and not just spelling and phonics, but really word study, thinking and learning about Latin and Greek, um, infusion in our language and, and really kind of blending spelling and phonics with vocabulary. So we had already done some training this, um, last month, and will, the remainder of our fourth and fifth grade teachers will be trained, um, in late May in preparation for next year.
They started this, or no? They're just starting to train?
So we've had some early adopters this year, try it out later, is starting about a month ago, and beginning next, next September, everybody in fourth and fifth grades will, will be implementing. So in K to eight, we've continued our work with skillfully using data to provide extra supports to all of our learners who require them. We are continuing to follow this process of having our screening measures in place. We screen all students, um, in K through five, three times a year. We screen at Melican at least twice a year, for some students, three times a year. We are using a screener approved by, um, the Department of Education, and after those screeners, we have team meetings where we look at the data together, we talk about what our students need, and make a plan for giving them what they need. We provide that to them, and then we're continuously collecting information to see if, if what we're giving them is helping them reach their learning goals.
Can I ask a, um, do you mind explaining a little more about like what you're screening for? Is it just fluency, or is it, you know, like dyslexia? Do you actually screen for that and look, or?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So if you're familiar with the Early Literacy Screening Guidance, um, it, we are following, we are adhering to that guidance. So, okay. I'm gonna, I'm not gonna, I could pull out a chart right now and really get into the nitty-gritty, but I'm not going to go down. Um, what, what we do with the screening is we, we, the law requires us to screen in K through three. We screen in K through eight, but what we're looking for are flags of, um, things that tell us that students might be having trouble, um, lifting the print from the page, or also understanding what they're reading. So a screening tool is not, it doesn't diagnose anything. It just gives us a little bit, sort of like at the doctors, if they take your temperature and you have a fever. We don't know exactly where we're gonna go with treatment, but we know that we need to take another look. Um, but with, in terms of the dyslexia question, I think I would need a lot more time to answer that thoroughly, um, because it is more in-depth. Um, but one thing you'll see up there is we are, um, we have two, we have a team from Northborough involved in Massachusetts Department of Education is offering a dyslexia institute this year. It was very competitive. Um, many districts applied. We're very fortunate to be sending a team of, um, one of our assistant, um, directors of student support is on the team with me, and two, um, student support teachers, and also a speech and language pathologist. So it's really a nice cross-section of general education, special education, so... But I'd be happy to tell you more about, about our screeners.
Thank you.
So, um, moving on to just focusing on Melican, the middle school, similar to last year how we were sharing with you about our curriculum review at K through five, we have engaged in similar work in a curriculum review for the ELA department, uh, at the middle school. So last spring, we, we really were reviewing past curriculum and instruction and identifying that it was time for us to review new resources. We established a curriculum review council this year. Uh, we have, um, representatives from Melican and from Trotter, um, it's joint work. We've been reviewing new resources. We sort of winnowed down to a few. We're deeply investigating them, reaching out to other districts who have history of implementation with those. Um, we are, uh, we've done a site visit, and we hope to make a recommendation for adoption before the end of the school year. And I think, I think just as I began, I really want to, um, say thank you to the dedicated, um, educators and leaders that have, um, supported all of this work and made this work happen, um, in the classrooms. It's, it's a really exciting time in literacy, but with excitement, sometimes it's, so it's also tiring, so.
Does anyone have any questions?
Sure. Um, just to follow up with that last slide about Melican.
Yeah.
Um, so once you finish your review of all the potential resources and curriculum, um, what type of training or when would that training be for the educators, um, and would it be in preparation for next school year?
Yeah, so as it was talked about in the budget process, it has been budgeted for implementation next year. Uh, we would aim to provide training before implementation, so we've already gotten some information, and it depends on where we, where we, what we end up recommending, but we will provide, we'll make sure that we plan, we're, we're already planning for that. It's just, we need to know where we land first before we can go ahead and schedule trainings.
So it'd be starting September, or would the curriculum start later in the year?
I think we will aim to start in September. That's the goal.
Uh, Joan, I heard a ding.
Uh, thank you, Kelly. Um, just so that you know, I have five questions, so you can cut me off at any point, okay?
Okay, I'm gonna cut you off right now, Joan. Uh, no, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
I missed it. You, you cut off at that point.
Oh, darn.
But thank you enough. Um, Megan, thank you very much for this presentation, and I also wanted to thank you for the time that you afforded me in the fall when you gave me a one-on-one tutorial on Wit and Wisdom. Um, my first question is on Wit and Wisdom, and my question is, um, I think that there's so much material to be covered in the Wit and Wisdom curriculum, and it seems that this was the first year of implementation. Where, is there parts of it that will not be completed this year, and how does that affect the learning of those students going forward for the next year?
That's a great question. So this is something we've talked a lot about with our Great Minds coaches and with other school districts that have implemented Wit and Wisdom, to kind of learn from them, and our coaches have, have told us that they're really impressed by, by how the implementation's going this year, and in terms of where we are with the curriculum. So we have carefully mapped out the standards of, you know, of each module, Joan. So we have a plan for, we have a, a very, we have a plan for how we're making sure we target those standards, um, i- in, in those modules that we might not get to by the end of the year.
Okay, but are the, are the students in any deficit, or are the next year, like, let's say if there's a module that's not covered in fourth and third grade, would the fourth grade teacher be aware of that? The fourth grade teacher, since you're all probably on the same curriculum span, would they be aware that that's something they just might have to do a quick introduction or review of?
Yeah, so it's, I don't want to send, to imply that there will be huge chunks of things, uh, you know, not, not, um, not introduced to students, but when there are, for those few standards that we've identified, wouldn't come until the very end of a typical school year, and with year one of implementation, our pacing has been a little bit slower than where you typically are year three or four of implementation. Um, we will communicate that to teachers, and we've already done a lot of communication about that.
Yeah, 'cause I think with any new curriculum area, if it's math, if it's science, social studies, and you're starting something brand new, we, I think every educator knows you're not gonna get to the final point of that curriculum in, um, the first year, because you're just learning, and you should be learning, all the steps and the new methodologies with it. So, thank you very much. I know that that is something that is, is expected across to any district. Can you just talk a little bit about that Great Minds coach? What, is Great Minds a company, or is that a title that you guys came up with?
No, we didn't come up with a title. Great Minds is the publishing house. Um, but it is a clever name. I wish we could be credited with coming up with the title. So they are a publishing house. They publish, um, teacher-created curricula, and they are, our coach has, is someone who, all of the coaches from, for the Wit and Wisdom, they've all taught Wit and Wisdom previously in schools and somewhere in the nation. So they're not just, you know, saying, I think this would work. They've actually lived it and breathed it as educators. Um, so that, that's, that's who we're referring to.
Okay. And is every teacher available to meet with the coach, or is it on a need assessment?
So the coaches right now are contracted to communicate with administrators. Um, so it's not, it, the coach is not, um, they visit the schools, but the coach is not here full-time to meet with teachers.
Okay. But are teachers able to come in and speak to the coach? Yeah, and do we have coverage for those teachers in case they have a concern or question to be answered that they can meet with them?
It's not that sort of set up with the, when the coach, the coach is not actually on-site all the time.
Okay.
Does Stephanie wanna add to that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I thought I heard a ding.
Yeah.
The structure of the coaching is really focused on leadership coaching right now, and on coaching the principals, um, the directors, um, the assistant directors of Student Sport Services of ELD, myself, Megan, and how we can support the teachers. Um, because we, we wouldn't have the scale for the coaches to work directly with the teachers, so it's a focus on leaders, and they are always available. Megan is often, um, emailing them, but then they have also been on-site and done collaborative observations with teams and leaders.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's really good, because those Great Minds coach, coaches are filtering down, and you have, we have the leaders in our district that are getting this benefit from them, and then they are being trained, and it'll be more coaches being available than for the teachers. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Um, thanks, Stephanie. Um, my, uh, third question, Megan, is you talked about the fourth and fifth grade spelling and the early adopters. What about the first through third? I was gonna say kindergarten, but I'll do first through third. Do they have a spelling program?
Yeah, so when I mentioned Live Letters and Project Read Phonics, those are the curricula that have been in place previously, and those are remaining in place. So Live Letters is for the first half of kindergarten, and then kindergarten begins study of Project Read Phonics. Grades one through three study Project Read Phonics for the entire year.
Okay, so those are programs that have already been established in the first through third, and the fourth and fifth grader doing their early doctors of the new spelling program?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I love the idea of the literacy screening. My question was to you, 'cause a lot of parents are gonna be seeing this, and if, if we have parents that would like to know what the literacy screening... we have parents that would like to know what the literacy screening device has provided information for their children, how could the parents go about to view this screening? I know sometimes it's available through parent-teacher conferences, but what if we're coming now, there aren't any? How can the parents get ahold of the screener to help their students during the summer months so there's no slump?
I would say the, you know, if, if parents have specific questions about screening data and they haven't been, if the data has not been shared with them, the classroom teacher would be their first contact for that information.
Okay, thank you. And then my final que, my final just comment is congratulations on going through that vetting process and getting a team to be on the 2024 Dyslexia Conference. And I look forward to hearing next school year, the wonderful things that you will be able to do as you are now with the Great Minds coach and filtering down and making everybody a coach or a leader in our district. So I look forward to hearing the good things that happen from that conference. So congratulations for your time and effort in submitting it and as you said, it was very competitive and I can imagine, so congratulations.
Thank you. I'll tell the team.
Thanks, Kelly, that's all.
Thanks, Joan. Bryce or Kristen, do you guys have anything?
So my thing is just about the wit and wisdom. And so I had a fifth grader, I have a fifth grader, and the book in the fall that they read, it was a little heavy. And so I would just like to see and find out like if there's more backup books, you know what I mean? Like I know this is our first year with it, so it's kind of like a learning curve for, for doing it, but it just seemed like there's gotta be other historical nob, fictional novels, I think is what, what the topic was that they were doing that has to do it. So it just, it doesn't seem like at this point with the first year that you can like sub in a different type of book. Like it seems like they're pretty like, this is the book that everybody has to read to go with this plan. So I just didn't know, like in the future, like if you see it going differently at all or?
We've had a lot of conversations with our Great Minds consultants about the text and also we have conversations in pro, in process with other districts that have, that are multiple years into implementation. So that's something that is, is, we're still thinking about next year. Right now, we're, to be honest, we're more focused on the now and then we'll, we'll focus on the fall as we get a little bit further into the modules this year. But yes, that's something we're still thinking about.
I had a question about the books too. I was wondering if there was a book list associated with this program?
Yeah, there, there certainly is. And if you go to the district website, it will, there is on our curriculum page, there is, is information about wit and wisdom with links to all the curriculum information you could possibly dream of wanting. And you would find text lists there on the wit and wisdom website.
And is it assumed that those are the books that are going to be introduced into the district from here on out?
Yeah, the curriculum has, these are books just during wit and wisdom time. These are not the only books that are part of the student's experience, but part of wit and wisdom. If we're speaking specifically to wit and wisdom, you would be able to see the texts that are part of the curriculum in addition to texts that are recommended as extra knowledge building texts that students might want to enjoy on their own time for pleasure reading that are connected to the learning.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Megan.
I tried to keep it short, Greg.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Student Opportunity Act Plan and we will need a vote on that.
Sure. So as part of the Federal Student Opportunity Act, districts are required to submit a three-year evidence, evidence-based plan aimed at closing student achievement gaps among student subgroups. So we, the Student Opportunity Act changed the funding formula for many districts. We have not seen a significant increase of funding as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, however, we're still required to submit a plan. The plan that we are submitting focuses on achievement gap with students with disabilities compared to students, the regular ed students. And our focus really will be on continuing the work around making sure that we have systematic culturally and linguistically sustaining literacy instruction and making sure that those methods are best addressed the disparities that we do see. And we're also continuing the work on having specialized training and focusing on Orton Gillingham as our specialized reading program and building out a cadre of educators who have that specific training, who can provide that instruction to students over the next three years. So although there is not a significant amount of money attached with the Student Opportunity Act for Northborough, this is, will be our focus for the next three years. The benchmarks that we will use each year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education releases achievement benchmarks and those will be the metrics that we'll use to, use as metrics to talk about progress toward those goals. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I know you just mentioned using the benchmark data. At any time, would you be looking at individual students and thinking, you know, what changes in their curriculum or their day-to-day, you know, academic rigor need to take place in order to, to help them reach their full potential?
Yeah, I mean, I think that when we look at a student who receives special education services, they have an individualized education plan. So a lot of the work that we do is individualized. So we will align students' IEP with evidence-based practices and monitor that progress for each student. So it is a case-by-case basis. But our systematic approach in terms of how we're teaching students with reading disabilities will be a systematic approach to literacy instruction through Orton Gillingham.
So I, I think that this process and using that data will be really helpful in informing our committee over the next three years, just to know how our budget can, can, can help. So if we need additional curriculum, training, that would be really helpful.
All right. Joan?
Greg, I have one question. I see that this is a three-year evidence-based plan. When you submit that, is September gonna be year one?
So when the plan is approved, that'll be year one, so it most likely will begin this September. And then each year, we'll need to submit a yearly action plan to achieve the goal set in the three-year plan.
Okay, would we, do we take a vote then on the action plan for three years or does it come back next year and we vote in the second year?
Do you have verbiage for that?
No, so you just need to approve the Student Opportunity Act three-year plan. That is the requirement. And then each year, the district is required to report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education its progress and any adjustments. As part of that reporting, we'll also report back to the committee progress.
So we could expect a report next year in spring before we adjourn in June, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So a motion could be to accept the Student Opportunity Act as presented.
Sure, I'll make a motion. So I move to accept the Student Opportunity Act Plan as presented this evening.
Second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Hearing none. It will be a roll call vote. Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Next, we have the school choice vote. Since we had the school choice public hearing earlier this evening, we've waived any additional presentations as a committee. So we just have to decide on if this is something that we want to opt out of for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Is there any specific motion?
No, I would just-
That we have to say verbiage? I didn't know, like statewide, if there's like a certain thing to?
No, I mean, it is my recommendation that the school committee does opt out of school choice, I think because of, I think the, you know, the disadvantages outweigh the advantages. And we look at our enrollment trends for next year, the number of classes that are toward the, the ceiling of our class size policy, it doesn't make sense to not opt out. So the motion could just be to the school committee opt, opt out of school choice for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year.
I'll submit a motion for Northborough K through eight to opt out of the, of course, in the middle of it. School choice for the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second. Motion by Bryce, seconded by Kristen. Any discussion? Seeing none. Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, so the Northborough School Committee has voted to opt out of school choice for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Next on the agenda is our legislative update.
So I believe the weeks and the days and the weeks are blurring together, but we did host the Northborough Legislative Delegation, I think a few Mondays ago. So we had Senator Kennedy and representatives-
Kilcoyne and Donahue.
Kilcoyne and Donahue. And we toured Z-School, Lincoln, Melican, and Proctor. And Kelly joined the tours and we had great conversations around what are, are legislative priorities, how the legislative delegation can support our interests. They represent, they are represented on the Education Committee, so they do have a lot of input in terms of education bills and I think it was a very helpful experience.
It was, it was a great experience. We even asked them if, if they would like to attend a school committee meeting in the future and they said definitely they're, they're open to coming in also, so. I feel like we should either, I don't know if it makes sense for this year, but look at the planning for next year and-
First budget meeting?
Yeah. And, you know, have them maybe in September, October, see if they come back. I think it would be a nice invite. It was, it was a great conversation. I had to leave for a, a prior dentist appointment, so I missed out on going to Proctor, but I did attend here at Melican and Senator Kennedy thought it would be fun to go into my daughter's classroom and say hi. And my daughter apparently didn't like that so much. So she forbade me to ever do that again and to, and to not know who she is and if I ever do come to the school to pretend I don't know her. And I said, I will gladly do that, especially when the school nurse calls and says, your daughter is not feeling well. I'll be like, who? I don't know her, I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to do that, so. But no, it was a great, it was great. I do know Senator Robin and Representative Kate and Megan, I do go to other meetings with them, so it was nice to see them coming and seeing the school. It was, it was a good experience, so.
And then I believe we are meeting with them again on-
On Monday?
This Monday.
On Monday, they're supposed to be going to the Board of Select meeting. Select board meeting, which is virtual. So if anybody else wants to attend, they're welcome to.
Okay.
Yeah, so I will confirm again with the Select Board that it is happening last month that got pushed, so I'll confirm with them that that's gonna happen.
All right. Moving on, we have some grants approval.
So the, the work of, of many, we received good, great news that we received a genocide education grant in the amount of twenty thousand for FY twenty-five. So that was excellent news. This is the second year that we received this grant and Stephanie, I'm not sure if you have any comments about this grant and how you plan on using it?
Sure. So this is actually for FY twenty-five and will actually be our third year of the grant. We're in our second year and we are gonna use this portion of the grant to do, focus on the secondary schools, so this will focus on the middle school and, you know, obviously on genocide education, but specifically on school-wide for all faculty anti-bias training and training on how to have the conversations with students about these topics. So that is the plans for this grant and it also supports our continued work with the World of Difference.
Stephanie, is that gonna be during like PD day, like the beginning of the school year type or is it throughout the year?
A great question. We have not finalized the actual, the exact timing, but it is likely to be in the fall. Potentially, you know, it could, it could be one of the half-days. We, we have not finalized the timing, but likely in the fall.
Thank you.
And then the second grant is the FY twenty-four, it's called Evaluate and Select High-Quality Instructional Materials, so Northborough Public Schools was awarded fifteen thousand dollars. And Stephanie, do you wanna provide a summary of that grant as well?
Sure. So this is a grant that by participating in a network that is run by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that supports districts in making, in really executing a systematic and, you know, evidence-based process for selecting high-quality instructional materials. And this particular award was to support Kathy Lizotte, our math coordinator, in leading our elementary curriculum leaders in reviewing high-quality instructional materials for elementary mathematics. And so this helps to pay for the stipends, for the teacher leaders, and for any pilot materials that were needed to examine math materials.
And I see that it was, so it was granted fifteen thousand to both Northborough and Southborough, but the nine thousand is for us because the sixty-forty split? Or how, how did-
Correct.
Okay. That's what I was guessing for that, so, okay.
Yes.
Great. Yep.
Stephanie, you mentioned that the, the other grant, sorry, I'm taking a step back here.
Genocide.
The genocide education grant. This section's gonna be for professional development. Do you mind telling me a little bit about the last two years that you've been doing? Has that also been professional development? Has that more been student-based and how do they connect the three years?
That's a great question. We have done a variety of things with the funding and it's been a different amount each year, which I don't remember the amounts off the top of my head, but initially, we did professional development with both social studies and English Language Arts teachers to really build their capacity and understanding around genocide education. We're very fortunate that one of our high school teachers, our high school department head for the social studies department, Brittany Burns, is really a leading, is really a leader in this area, in the field, and does work with other schools often and works with some of the partner organizations like Facing History and Ourselves and Primary Source. So Brittany has led a lot of this PD for our teachers and they learned about the stages of genocide and about the, I guess the simple way to say it is sort of the do's and don'ts of, of genocide education, of, you know, types of materials to use- Of of genocide education, of you know, types of materials to use, types of materials not to use. Ways to approach this topic. It's obviously a sensitive topic. It then sort of moved into curriculum analysis and really looking. And again, with history and ELA teachers, looking at where are the opportunities? Because this was when we were initially responding to the new legislation. And so we needed to say, where are the opportunities to infuse this into our existing curriculum? So not create new units to put on top, but to look at the existing units of study um in most cases. And say, now how do we take the stages of genocide and come to agreements about what's happening in middle school, what's happening in high school? Um so there was some of that work. Um and then we have also had some outside providers um paid for by the grants. Where Facing History and Ourselves has provided um professional development. And um the Anti-Defamation League has provided professional development.
And the the legislation you mentioned that you were just requires new legislation that required that education in middle school and high school, right? I keep talking to the owl.
Yes, and that is Massachusetts. That was a Massachusetts um new law. That required in middle school and high school that students, it, you, there's, there's a lot of latitude in many respects. But basically that we are teaching about genocide education to our secondary students.
And congratulations to you and Rebecca on both the grants. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Joan, did I hear a ding?
I think that was me.
Hi, no.
No, okay.
Thank you though, Kelly.
You're welcome. Alrighty, so um we need a motion for approval of both of the grants. Can we read them both? Can we approve them both together? Can we do, or do we, should we do them separate?
I think if you do them separate.
Separate, okay.
Um so I move to approve the FC two-one-five A genocide education grant in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Bryce. Uh any discussion? Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. Um thank you so much um for the genocide education grant.
I'd like to kind of a motion to approve the FY twenty-four. Evaluate and Select High-Quality Instructional Materials Network Support Targeted Grant in the amount of nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Kristen, seconded by Lauren. Any discussion? Uh Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. Approval for the grant. Thank you so much. Thank you um Stephanie and Becky for all your hard work on getting us grant money. We appreciate it. Old Business Health and Human Service Strategic Assessment Report. I did read this, I have to tell you.
God bless you.
This very long, lengthy thing. I'd like to hear Greg's take on it.
Sure, I'll summarize it in hundred and forty.
Perfect.
Um so at last uh month's school committee meeting, there were some questions around what participation. What role did the schools play in the development of this assessment? Um so we've invited Mary Ellen Duggan to join us at the table. And talk about um the process and how they gathered information from the school department.
It was a very thorough report, I have to say.
It's a very thorough report.
Very thorough.
So, did you have questions or do you want me to?
I mean, I, I do have a question about uh just the drug education. I know that was part of one of the things that was saying they're gonna bring back, you know, that was one of the item things and stuff. But again, it's a minute thing, so it might not even be something else. I was just saying, I know at Proctor, for at least. We haven't had like the Dare program for since um two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Which are basically now sophomores, so there's gonna be like a gap of kids that have not had. Any like programming, things like that.
But they.
So.
It might have been missing in their fifth grade, but they got it in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in health education. Substance use prevention is part of their health education curriculum here at the middle school. So that that might be lacking, that be, it would, it's covered yearly in the curriculum and then again in tenth grade.
Okay, and so for the kids that had like the Dare programs before, did they not have it in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade?
No, they, they don't have a Dare program. They've always had health edu- when they.
They've always had it in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. When we did have a Dare program, they had it exposure in fifth grade.
They're, they're where it started.
Where it started in fifth grade. So then when that went away, then they just have it in those years. Okay.
So I think the Health and Human Services Report really didn't.
Well, it's.
More about, we have a drug-free community grant and a drug-free community coordinator.
That's what I was, that's where I was wondering if within that drug-free.
The drug-free community grant.
Grant and stuff, that's why I was wondering if that, cause it said drug education.
Right.
So that's why I was wondering if that was.
Right, so the drug-free community grant is um, it's a federal grant and it's focused on sixth through twelfth grade.
Okay.
Um it also can have a community focus where you can like stretch it a little bit, right, to include some fifth grade um and younger. But it's um mainly focused on sixth through twelfth grade. And we do have a drug-free community coordinator who is, you know, very active. She was just hired and has already started a lot of things, so it's really great to see. So hopefully we'll see it trickle down and once we um, and we'll get that Dare program or a similar evidence-based program back in.
Things are starting younger and younger with kids, with exposure for internet and everything else nowadays. So I feel like the earliest intervention and the earliest education can provide all of our students the better, you know, for everything.
So if you haven't had a chance to look at the Health and Human Services Report, um it's on the town website. There is a um, the senior center is hosting a Q and A with our health, um our interim health director. And I'm not sure if the person from CMR CP or the the group that did the report. Is going to be there also to help answer questions, cause this is going to come up on the town warrant.
That was, that was my question actually, so being attached on. My take on this was that it was more for the town and there was this like board meeting a couple of weeks ago. Cause I have the joy of hearing all of those all the time now. Um that they were really hammering away, they had the the interim health director there and a few other people. Basically talking about restructuring, right, and changing a bunch of stuff. And that's what's coming up in town meeting, right?
So, yes.
I guess my question would be how much of that relates to what is done in the schools, if at all? You know, or was this really like you gave them some info and they assessed, but it's really the town health department they're trying to restructure?
So they are trying to restructure the Youth and Family Services and the Health Department to make it a Health and Human Services Department. So we were part of, there was a original assessment done about maybe fourteen or fifteen months ago. It was a Collins report that was done. It was a assessment of the Youth and Family Services in town. From that assessment came the recommendation to do a review and to have this review and think about restructuring. Um from the original assessment. So we as a school system are intertwined with the Health Department even more so since COVID. But before that, we did a little bit, but since um the pandemic, we have been more intertwined and interacted in a lot. Of many, many, many ways. Um and with Youth and Family Services, obviously, we, we work with both of those departments. And so our input as a key stakeholder was they sought it out because we are key stakeholders with both departments. So I one hundred percent support the restructuring.
Joan?
Thank you, Kelly. Um Mary Ellen, thank you for coming tonight and um answering questions. Cause when I first saw the report, um I realized that it came from the town, but yet there were certain sections. That had put something in there that the school would create a committee or appoint a person to it. And I just didn't know about the time constraints, if we had enough staff to help to do some of the things that were some of the objectives on it. And then when I saw the, I believe that you were working with this committee to create this, I felt that it was in good hands. So my question was only, do we, how do the schools help into this going forward? What is the involvement of the schools and the school staff?
Um the involvement of the school, well, Dr. Lipton O'Connor and myself are part of of a encompass coalition. Which is our Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, which involves Youth and Family Services, the drug. If we had Youth and Family Services, but it's, it's regional, it's both North Borough and South Borough. Youth and Family Services and the Health Departments as part of this, working for this drug-free community grant and with the coordinator. So we're involved with that. We're involved with um the Be Well North Borough. Um which is all part of all of our town departments, the police, the fire, Health and Human Services. Um if we had Family and Youth Services, they would, they would be a part of it before June retired. She was a part of that committee too. So I think we're already involved, uh it wouldn't be an added involvement, I don't see. You know, like the restructuring of the Health and Human Services Department is really just reorganizing. What we already have and building on that, on what's already present.
And, and I can add that the new strategic alignment that is moving forward. Will better support the work that we're doing within our schools compared to uh what we experienced in the past. So we are excited about this restructuring. We think it will benefit and um help assist the work that we do. Uh moving forward.
So we've had, we wrote for grants to fill in for the gaps that weren't being met by the lack of structure.
Well, knowing that you were involved in it along with Dr. Lipton O'Connor. And the wonderful job that you did working together with the towns of North Borough and South Borough and getting us through the COVID. Um epidemic that we had. Uh I know that your involvement and as I said, well, reassures us that we're, we're going in the right steps. And as Greg said, as in the strategic set uh plan and to go forward. So thank you for all your time and ex- I don't know where you find extra time to do these things. But somehow you do and you always excel with high marks, so thank you very much for your involvement in answering my questions.
Oh, my pleasure.
I, oh, go ahead.
I um just had a question about how um the Family and Youth Services and the North Borough Public Schools collaborate together. Um and how, cause I saw that, you know, it talked about their collaboration. Um and how, especially with mental health services. Um if a family is in need, um are, is the Family and Youth Services able to help all families? Or is it just families with financial um difficulties? Um what type of assistance are they typically able to provide our students?
So currently, we don't have Family and Youth Services in North Borough. So did, that would suggest to put that right there, so we do not have those um positions are open.
Okay.
And so this was the perfect time to talk about restructuring. While we had a health director who resigned and we have an interim health director. We had a Youth and Family Services Director who, who retired. And so this is the time to think about restructuring, right, and to start with a fresh slate and what's gonna be the best for the town. So in the past, pre-COVID, um Family and Youth Services, when there, there was a full-time director. A part-time social worker and then an administrative assistant. The part-time, I think it was in two thousand and eighteen, the part-time social worker um resigned. And so we had the director and an administrative assistant. And our interaction with them, sometimes they, prior to COVID, they would come in. When there was a part-time social worker, they'd come in and meet with students during the school day. That was one benefit. Like if someone needed um some counseling, they could do it during the school day so that the parents didn't have to go seek somewhere after school hours. Um they are part of many of our committees, our Wellness Committee, our Substance Use Committee. They can help any person in town. It does, it's not just a financial need, it's if any kind of need. So um as the ability of the director. To provide those services diminished because of other things they had to do. That's when we went to Interface. We started with Interface as a referral service. And the, the Youth and Family Services Department became more of a referral place. Like someone would go there and they would refer them where they could go instead of a therapeutic setting. Um and so this is where it ended up. It was a referral place. We referred to um Interface was mainly what we would do, wh- where they were being referred to. So then um in that interim, we had a need in the schools. So we wrote a grant with the health, with Isabella Caruso, who is the epidemiologist and the interim um health director now. We wrote a grant to provide the services for therapies for our students in the school. That was the gap that we had with Youth and Family Services not being able to fill them. So we have that grant that goes through this year that helped to fill in that gap. Um we have a wonderful community services, we have Helping Hands, we have the Food Pantry. We have a lot of, we have the Benevolent Fund if needed. So we have a lot of community resources that have helped to um helped all of our families in need also. So we just need to figure out what's the best structure for our town and what they need to meet the needs that keep growing.
And it's, it's looking like, you know, once this restructure's happening and then people are hired and onboarded. That collaboration with the schools will continue and then increase.
Correct, hopefully, yes. So with the, with having a full-time social worker, the plan is to have a full-time social worker. And a full-time outreach coordinator and a full-time administrative assistant. And the drug-free coordinator would be kind of in that um Youth and Family Services sector. Then I think it would be, the services will be able to be provided at a much higher rate and with much more success.
Great, thanks for that explanation.
You're welcome.
I think it's interesting that the plumbing instruct- uh inspector was on the Health Department.
I think, and you get the sanitation, yeah, so.
I'm like, I'm like, that's an interesting.
It is great, but the, our Health Department has grown exponentially.
Yeah.
Um through long-term grants, like some people are worried that it's all grant-funded, but they're long-term grants. Like the drug-free community is a five-year with the option for ten. Um so a lot of the Boroughs Community Grants, they, they're long-term grants, they're not short-term grants. That will go away in this year or next month, so. I think it's um, and using some of our opioid fundings to fund the positions, it's really. Makes a lot of sense to me to provide the bu- biggest bang for our buck.
This week or is it next week? That's the Health Week of all the meetings. Like there's all the different trainings.
This was, this is, this is National Public Health.
Yeah, I was like, I was like, I know it was, it was this agreement, so.
Collaborated this week with our Public Health Department.
Yep.
We um had, they had a table at the high school today, um asking the students in two words or less. What their definition of public health was. It was great just to get out there. There was also a great blood drive that the high school had today. Um but uh we did a CPR class at the library last night. I did with them. They had a um Narcan training in South Borough on Monday night. There's drop-in blood pressure clinic tomorrow. Oh, that was today, today?
Today's Wednesday.
No, tomorrow, today. Thursday's a drop-in blood pressure clinic at the North Borough Library. And Friday is a drop-in Narcan Training Clinic, so you can go and get a Narcan training and get Narcan.
And I've done that training and it's a great training, just for anybody who wants to.
So they have definitely, as the years have gone, you know, COVID did want, it was, it was awful to live through. But there are great benefits that came from it. There were several linings and um the growth of our Health Department was definitely one of them.
Thank you for coming in tonight, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, my pleasure.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, don't hesitate to send them my way.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Superintendent Report to the Committee, enrollments.
So in your packet is the enrollment report as of March 18th. We continue to monitor kindergarten enrollment very closely to see if it is trending as projected. And we're also looking at any sections or gray level that we might need to consider shifting staffing. So that is a work that's happening behind the scenes. But at this point in time, there are no significant concerns about enrollment and there's nothing askew from what we have projected. Also in your packet is the FY24 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So the report that is included in your packet represents expenditures for fiscal year 2024 through March 31st of 2024. As you can see, we have just over $160,000 remaining on the bottom line or 0.57%. That number is up from the February report, just about $41,000. And the reason for that is that we had some staffing changes, retirements, resignations that have actually made some changes to our bottom line figure. I also want to point out that we are really trending closely with where we've been for the previous two fiscal years. Last year, we had 163,000 remaining or 0.61%. And the previous year, we had just about 164 or 0.64%. So we're really right in line where we're supposed to be at this point in the fiscal year. One of the areas that I did want to point out that we're closely watching is the long-term substitute account. You can find that on page three of the report and that's account number 2324. We did start to use this account in this fiscal year because it will simplify our filing of our end-of-year report to DESI. And this account is used for any substitutes who are filling positions of 30 days or more. Previously, these funds were embedded and we're coming from our teacher salary line items, like for example, 2305, which is our general education teacher salary. And you can see that that account does have a balance of about 178,000. And previously, we've had to tease that out and we've had crosswalks. And so by creating this account, it's really going to simplify things. And I think it's also going to give us a better sense for where we stand, excuse me, with those type of expenses. And we have budgeted for that separately in our FY25 budget. But now that we do have three months remaining, we're in the last quarter of the fiscal year, we're starting to plan for fiscal year-end. We're working with our schools and our departments to review any open purchase orders and also to plan any year-end purchases. And I welcome any questions on the Monthly General Fund Report.
Yeah, I think it all, anybody have?
Interesting to hear about the reporting to DESI on the long-term. So I'm just curious, is that a, was that a non-compliance issue or was that just a detail?
It's, so the way we reported it in the past wasn't aligned necessarily with end-of-year reports.
Yeah, okay.
Which required us to do those crosswalks. So this current report is aligned with end-of-year funding. So it accurately allows us to see in the account what our expenditures are versus trying to disagree other accounts to figure that number out.
Correct, it wasn't that we weren't reporting it, we were. It was just, I think, problematic or more time-consuming rather to try to get to the final number.
It's kind of like buried in there type of thing. Are there other areas in the budget that you foresee wanting to separate them out more? Because I know you've been doing work on that for the past like couple of years. You know, you always are like, oh, we're pulling this out here, we're pulling this out there, but yeah.
Yeah, I think at this point, we've really, I think, gotten to the, those accounts that we really wanted to drill down on and to clean up. I'm sure that there will be more work, but I think once we took the end-of-year report in-house, we used to have an outside accounting firm help us with that, with the preparation of this. We really, it became evident to us that we needed to do some cleanup with our accounts. And I, we've done that over the past three years and I feel like we're finally in a good place for it. I know Sunny is very appreciative of these changes.
Alright, so I will take a motion to approve until audited.
So moved?
So moved by Bryce, seconded by, who was, who said that? Kristen, to approve the Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, fiscal year 2024, as of March 31st, 2024, until audited. Any discussion? Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, so it passes unanimously?
Do you need a charger?
Yes.
I think that one will work. Those typically, the Chromebook one will work.
Is it the, which computer?
So we are running on low battery on the.
I'm pretty sure these will work on a Mac.
I see another Mac down there.
Oh, you know what the funny thing is? I was going to bring it today too.
Thank you, Lauren.
Do you, Lauren? I'm always unprepared and my students give me their chargers, so I'm used to it.
I was going to use it as an opportunity to move things along.
Oh, gotta go, gotta go, yeah, out of battery, sorry.
Crisis averted, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren, we can take our time now.
So also in your packet is the FY25 School Committee Approved Budget. And lastly, for the Superintendent's Report, I did include the warrant articles that will be presented at the Monday, April 22nd Town Meeting.
Who's going to Town Meeting?
On the 22nd?
So everyone, Kristen, do you know if you're going or not?
I assumed I had to, I didn't know.
I mean, it's, I mean, yeah, it's not mandatory to go to Town Meeting, but it's.
Post the meeting for the School Committee and if we have a quorum, we'll be set.
What time, it's 7:00 PM, right?
I feel like I saw it six, I, I want to clarify.
What I can do is I can make sure I have the time and dates correct.
It said 6:00 PM on the website when I looked up, it said 6:00 PM.
Okay. I'm going to put 6:00 PM in my calendar.
Yeah, I want to clarify that, that they are in fact having it on the 22nd because it is the first night of Passover, so.
But you haven't heard, I mean, it was announced, it's been live on the website.
It's been live on the website and nobody said anything to my knowledge, I don't know, so.
So what's?
I don't know why I always thought it was the last Monday.
So it's, it's actually by the, by the bylaws, it's the fourth Monday. We just happen to have the first on a Monday this year, so we have five Mondays this, this month. But it is typically the, the last Monday of the month. But the bylaws are written that it is the fourth Monday, so.
So the warrant articles that are placed on the Town one is the school budget. And then we also have an article for the funding of the encapsulation of the chimney ductwork at the Peaslee School.
Bryce, I know you want to read that one.
I hope the chair gets to read all of them.
I don't think I have to. I, I will share the love. If you guys want to get up there and read, you are welcome to it.
I will, if you really, yeah, if you want.
We can spread the love around.
At the Town, at the Town Meeting, yeah, totally, it's absolutely fine.
We can totally spread it around.
Article 34, which is a feasibility study for Marguerite E. Peaslee Elementary School. I think this is a really important one. This does fund the feasibility study if the town of Northborough is invited into feasibility after it finishes eligibility. The reason why it's on this spring Town Meeting is because eligibility is 270 days, which began on April 1st. Eligibility will be completed in December. Part of eligibility will be, is to secure funding for a feasibility study. So this is being proactive.
Yeah, which, so we won't require a special meeting for it and we won't infringe on the special meeting that they might be having in the fall for.
In our, our timeline, this actually money will be in fiscal year 26 that it will be actually needed from the town. And then Article 35, 36, and 38 is to lease the space, the roofing, the roof space. Because it is a town asset, it is a requirement that the Town Meeting members approve the lease of the roofs for the solar arrays. Article 32 is the hot water system upgrade. And that concludes the articles being presented.
I think I can manage some of that.
Yep.
During these warrant articles at Town Meeting, the descriptions that you have, Greg, will you go, will you essentially present each warrant?
Correct.
Okay, great. I think that especially.
You'll present, yeah.
I think especially for Article 34. It would be really helpful, I think, for the town just to hear about that background information and paint that picture so that they know, you know, if it doesn't pass, we're going to need a town, a special Town Meeting later in the year.
So my thinking is 34, we'll need, you know, greater explanation. And then the power purchasing, we can combine.
Explain them all in one, yeah.
I think, you know, we can combine the hot water and the encapsulation as another slide, so three slides.
And I think hearing about maybe other feasibility studies around and what their price tags were, that would be helpful.
What was?
950,000.
Okay.
Southborough's were in the process of going through feasibility with the town of Southborough and their feasibility study was 950,000, a little bit larger, great configuration project. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Great, in the past, we, for the Town Meeting, I think we've all kind of stood up there and then kind of.
For the warrant articles.
For the warrant articles.
It's changed a little bit each year.
Yeah.
Usually for the budget, we all stand up there.
Yeah.
And then for the other ones, sort of dabble in the front.
Yeah.
So whatever we choose to do.
They don't need to know.
We can do whatever the chair wants.
They don't need to know who's reading them, alright?
So typically, they do.
Do they want to know who's reading them?
They haven't asked, usually they will ask. They usually have a pre-Town Meeting planning session.
Yeah.
So I will find out if that is the case this year and I'll find out what information they, they will need from the committee preparation for.
Is anybody opposed to reading anything? No? Okay.
I mean, another, another, you can also state the, you know, make a motion to approve the warrant article as printed.
If you really get up there and get tongue tied, just present it, just read it.
I just remember, I just remember there was one word last year that I was like, I just kept like, I was like.
The warrant, people have the warrant in front of them.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. It's up, well, would it be up there already?
They also project it usually too. It's just like words like mnemonic and stuff like that.
So I will, I will speak to the Town Administrator and see what his expectations are and I will communicate that back to Kelly.
And then if you need to sign us up for certain warrant articles, it sounds like we'll all be there.
Just sign us up. Yeah. Joan?
I just have a word of wisdom on the warrant articles. The process that it goes is usually Greg will give us, or the Town Administrator will give us a sheet of paper that has the warrant on it. And one thing we always have to remember is the person who is reading it then has to sign it. And then you give it to the Town Moderator, that piece of paper. And an important part is, and somebody will do it if we felt to do it, is to get the motion seconded. So when you read it, somebody from a school committee or outside can second the motion. You sign the piece of paper and give it to the moderator and then you just introduce the superintendent who will be making the presentation.
And, and the one who's, the one who's presenting it, we're the motioner, right? So the, so we're motioning for the town to, and then one of.
Waiting for a second.
And then one of us would second it.
And it can be anyone.
Anybody in the audience can do it too, yeah, yeah. You know, 360 days ago.
Thank you, Joan, that's helpful.
Thanks, Joan. Alright, School Committee Member Reports. Joan, do you have any member reports?
I certainly do. As most of you know, this weekend is going to be, on April the 5th, is going to be the, the date for the NEF Trivia Night. It's going to be held on Friday at Sivering Keys at 7:00, 7:30, doors open at 7:00. They're still looking, you can still register. All this information is on the NEF website. You can register your team from anywhere from two to four players. And if you have some family members that want to come, they can come to watch the proceedings and just with the suggested donation of $10. Along with that, they have an online auction that is already in the process and new items have been added to that auction, which always is very helpful to parents and is at high, people really want this. The first one is reserve, two reserved seating parking packages for the 2024 Algonquin Graduation Ceremony, which includes reserved parking space and four seats. So I think there's two of those. There is a registration that they're bidding on for the Northborough Youth Soccer and also one month unlimited membership to Pure Bar Northborough. Other things that you can bid on are four Red Sox tickets versus the Yankees, Sirloin's tailgate for eight people and a year of dance at Diane Korners Dance Center. And this year, the, the Trivia Night is being sponsored by two merchants in our area, Metro West Oral Surgical Associates and Michelle Lesby Villagers. So if anybody wants any more information or if you want to bid on some of those, the live auction, you can do that by going to the NEF website. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. And Greg did say that we sponsored a.
We have a, a team, a principal's team who will be participating on Monday night.
Alright, bring home the gold.
Jen Callahan, Stacy Mahoney, Mary Cokely, me.
That'd be fun.
And we might add a couple of people.
There's no, no limit for our team.
You gotta add some folks that'll stay the whole time so that you can tap out and go home when you.
But they'll allow six for us, right?
We'll just have some people sitting in the background.
If I wasn't at Cheer Awards Night, I'd be right there sitting with you. Cheer season's coming to an end. Bryce, do you have anything?
I didn't, my kids got sick the last time the, the El Pack met, so that did not work out for me. It was probably the same stomach bug y'all were trying to figure out.
It's like even on like the Facebook pages, everybody's got it.
I'm not even saying anything.
The Wellness Committee met, it's two weeks ago now and they discussed updates on a number of initiatives. I had to go to the notes. The Encompass Youth Advisory Council has an Instagram page. Anyone's more cool than me can has Instagram, but definitely follow them. And Wellness Day is next week, April 10th is Wellness Day. So there's some activities going around on the schools promoting wellness for students and staff. The K-38 Lunch Study is still going on a meeting. The K three-eight lunch study is still going on a meeting monthly. They're gonna be discussing the breakfast. We discussed in previous meetings how, well, I, I do love that there's a breakfast and my kids love that there's a breakfast, that it doesn't always have, has choices they would make instead of what I would make, so that way. So there's, they're gonna look at that, or there is a study group looking at that. There is a, a focus group looking at the, to update the health and PE curriculum as well, including a vision analysis gap, a vision development. Sorry, I'm too into curriculum and assessment. I'm like, then, um, what else have I missed? There's a SBRT study data. They had a, a youth wel- wellness coach that was welcomed at the meeting and she'll be doing those screenings over the past couple of weeks and the next few months, I guess. And then the committee also took time to work on the checklist, the committee checklist, and sort of brainstorm how that could be improved too. About when my signal died out, I think, when everyone dropped off my call. And there was one, oh, the policy, it's all say joint policy. It was Northborough's Joint Policy Subcommittee met yesterday and discussed a new policy for us. And based on the regional policy on sponsorships and advertising, but would be a new policy for Northborough. So that's gonna move on to a first reading.
When is that, would that be?
Next month.
Next month? Okay.
That's all good.
Yeah, so we, we look forward to Bryce and Kelly, your comments, and Joan of course as well. I think that we had a lot of good discussion yesterday and sort of taking the policy and making it Northborough specific. And, and essentially thinking, what is the school committee's role in these things of advertising, donations, crowdfunding, et cetera? So it'd be really great to get more feedback, because we didn't make any changes, but I think we will.
Yeah. I mean, I think the main thing is too, is like, we're K through eight versus nine through twelve.
Well, there were a lot of edits that they did for that. Like they took the nine through twelve policy and got rid of all the regional stuff and made it K through eight, made it much more specific.
There was a lot of changes, but we, once we were reading through it, we're like, well, this looks pretty official.
Yeah.
But I think, thinking from a parent perspective and a PTO perspective would be really helpful to hear your feedback, so.
Great.
Do you have anything else? A couple of other updates. So today, the first Wednesday of the month, is paraprofessional appreciation day. So thank you to all of our ESPs. Our ESPs are so hardworking and we could not do what we do in this district without them. So thank you so much to our paraprofessionals today and every day. Last week, the Coalition for Equity met. We talked about several things. The Culture and Music Festival was last Wednesday. I didn't get to attend because again, the stomach bug. We're going on day seventeen in my house, so were you able to attend?
I did. It was a, a great celebration with a lot of wonderful dance, singing, and presentations, so it was well attended. It was organized this year by a group of Algonquin students. And I think it was probably the best yet of the, of the song.
That's cool.
I believe this was the third annual?
This is the third.
Third.
Is that the one that previously been in June, or is that a totally different one?
That's International Night, so this was, this has been typically early May, so this is a little earlier than typical.
Although, I wanna say two years ago, it was the night before graduation. Uh, because remember, we were gonna use the fields and the setup, but then it rained anyways. Uh, so, yeah, thank you to our students especially for putting that together. We talked about reconvening the calendar study groups. We have our first meeting tomorrow. I believe Kelly will also serve on that.
Yep.
So we'll be working with community members, parents, administration, to come up with a recommendation for the combined school committee meeting in June. June or Sept- September?
September. So our goal is to create a plan, create draft calendars to present at the June, at the-
September, maybe.
September combined meeting.
Um, we talked about Storybridge, which is a great event that we have had for two years now, where community members are able to present their stories and work with, um, this Storybridge organization and how we are thinking about changing the timeline for that. That way, our presenters don't have to sort of use their summertime in order to prepare. And just how that will look, maybe to, um, allow the stories to be told more than just once. So we did talk about tweaking that a bit.
What, are they thinking like having, uh, an additional one like in the springtime type thing, or moving the October one to the springtime?
So moving, moving the timeline.
The time, so move, yeah.
And then also potentially either recording them and having them available online.
I mean, they are.
Yeah.
They are, they are, I mean, you can go right now and click on it and see them.
We talked about having, um-
The YouTube things, but-
More like digestible, uh, almost like social media posts.
Yeah.
You know, Kamali's really, I, I want Kamali, I wanna hire Kamali, like.
Yeah.
But I think our students could do a really great job. We have a lot of talented students who, um, have expertise in that.
Yeah, it is, it is a great, um, it is a great thing. I've been to the past two years and I love it. I know they were saying, I heard people saying about, it's, it's usually more heavy on the Southborough stories than it is on the Northborough stories. So message to the Northborough residents to, you know, join. And, and, and maybe it is a summer issue, you know? Because I know they do meet in the summertime, so maybe having it more later and that they could do it, maybe that would appeal to more people.
And I think because Storybridge is out of Southborough, it's more well-known there.
Yeah, it, it's a Southborough resident who started.
So that's our job, get it, get it known in Northborough, so that people can tell their stories. Um, we did talk a little bit about the World of Difference Program through Anti-Defamation League and transitioning to in-house. Still keeping our student leaders, our student ambassadors. So Anti-Defamation League is actually retiring their program, a World of Difference. But there's a lot of resources out there. The students who are part of the Coalition went to a recent leadership conference, not specifically through a World of Difference, but with a lot of other student leaders on these same type of matters. And so in talking with other schools and mentors, there'll be plenty of resources to continue this type of program in our schools. And then I, well, we were all invited to the Iftar dinner. I think that was a couple of Fridays ago. So we are in Ramadan right now and we were able to break fast with a lot of community members who celebrate Ramadan. I believe the, that we broke fast at, I think it was seven oh one or seven oh two. And it was just a great experience to hear from an Algonquin student about their experience at Algonquin. Well, he was practicing Ramadan. Um, and just talk with other parents and family members. So I really appreciated being invited to that.
That was such a fun event last year too. I'm glad, I'm glad somebody was able to make it.
To make it this year, yeah.
It was really great to just make those connections and, and learn, since I, you know, don't practice myself, so. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks Lauren. Uh, yeah, so I was gonna mention the calendar is, study group is kicking off again tomorrow night. Tomorrow at four o'clock, four to six-thirty, and it's virtual. Uh, we did have a solar meeting on the eleventh. Um, and was just kind of basically, you know, gearing up for the warrant articles and, uh, telling the committee, other committee members like where we're going and. I think it'll be great if we can get that passed. Hopefully I don't envision any resistance from the town, so hopefully that'll slide right through. And then I believe they were saying it could be like the fall, I feel like they were saying, the winter?
Yeah, I think-
Late fall, I feel like they were saying, could be potentially-
So Proctor and Lincoln are turnkey.
Yeah.
Were ready, so I think those will move rather quickly.
Yeah.
And then Z is dependent on-
Uh, they have to get a new roof, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So that would be nice savings for our budgets, you know, when that comes along. NSPAC, I mentioned it briefly last month, but on April twenty-third, Sarah Ward is doing Executive Functioning Workshop. And you can register on, it's at six PM, you can register on their website for that meeting. And this week, they opened up Go the Distance nominations. So if your student is on a five oh four or an IEP, you can nominate a community member, a teacher, an aide, like somebody who your student has connected with, bond with, that's helped them in their educational experience. Could be a coach, we, they're, they've been like team coaches, community members in the past. So the event is gonna be May twenty-first. And it's actually moving locations. It's still at the high school, but in the previous years it's been in the cafeteria. This year they are moving it to the auditorium. So they're kind of excited about the new location for that and see how that's gonna go. And then the nominations are open from now until the twelfth. And you can go on their website to make those nominations as well.
All righty.
No pa- educational policy. Not at this time, policy development. We're gonna have some of that next month. Distribution of personnel report.
So in your packet is the personnel report as of April third, and we've had some appointments and resignations. Um, I'll just also note that we do have a number of Northborough educators who are retiring at the end of this year. And we will be inviting them to leave our June meeting to acknowledge their years of service and wish them well in their future endeavors.
I did notice that they did get a crossing guard at Lincoln Street, which I know was a thing. But I noticed that Proctor lost a proctor. And I didn't know if the, the resignation from the Proctor was a decision based on like traffic flow, or is it, okay. Cause they were just appointed in January, so it was a short-
Correct. So we, we still have a position. Um, and Keith, maybe you are aware, have we hired for that position, the crossing guard at Proctor?
We have not, not to my knowledge yet Greg. I can check on that tomorrow.
So Lincoln Street, we have had success, which is great news. That was one of the-
Greg, I have, you have anything?
Oh, Becky has not either, so. But it's not, it's not because we're not filling that position, it's just a lack of applicants at this point. The Lincoln Street crossing guard position has been filled and the control, traffic control lights have been fixed. So those are now working and functional.
Communications, not at this time, action on open meeting minutes of March sixth. Any discussion about that? No? Do we have a motion to accept the motion, the meeting minutes from March sixth?
So moved?
By Bryce.
Second.
I'll go with-
That was like-
That was in time. Give us a Chris it.
All right, we'll say Kristen seconded it.
Do the next one.
Kristen. No discussion? No? Roll call Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So, meeting minutes have been approved. Future agenda items, um, Northborough Cable. We need to follow up with him to see if he got his quotes. I think he did get his quotes back and I believe they are presenting to the Board of Selectmen at some point, so we can find out about that. I, I think I mentioned to you all about potentially next year, moving to, next year, I don't know how people feel about that, but put that on the agenda if you want for discussion. I don't know if you wanna-
I think we should discuss it. I mean, you know, our audience members had to move, so they could hear us tonight, so. I think that we need a space that will work for us and our audience.
Yep. Social emotional learning presentation, anything else?
This might need to go to subcommittee first, I think, but a homework policy, a review of the homework policy, it may, um-
Yeah.
You know, Kelly and I were discussing this earlier, because it was an MCAS day in middle school and then they still had homework and the turnout was just kinda like-
Apparently there, in the homework policy and the homework, there is no restriction on giving homework around MCAS testing, so some of the teachers said, oh, well, we give it to the night before the MCAS, so, even though some of them did. And then some of them said that you can still have it tonight, but, I mean, these kids are, and even though it's half a day of testing, it's strenuous.
Yeah.
You know, mental, emotional thing, so, um, you know, potentially having some sort of policy around homework and, um, MCAS testing or any standardized testing that they do. I don't know if they do more accelerated ones in the, in the high school, I don't know, but that would be their issue. But I think it's MCAS pretty much for K through eight. And again, the, it's not as an issue for the K through five. But the sixth, seventh, eighth graders and, I was, I was looking at the policy and seeing how much, they, they could have, you know, seventy to ninety minutes of homework per night is, is what our policy is geared for, which, Bryce, your face is, I know, and, and-
For?
Homework in general for a week.
For middle schools?
For middle school, sixth grade. That's like a sixth grader is that. Seventh grader is even longer and eighth grader is even longer, like-
We should, uh,
So.
bring it to the next joint policy subcommittee meeting. It might be a policy that all three districts wanna take on. And then if not, it's something that the Northborough committee could, could work on.
Yeah. I was saying to Kristen that my daughter particularly, she's, she takes after my husband and she will come home, she'll do homework, she's very good, she'll try to do it during the day, the school, things like that. My other daughter takes after me and so I know she would be flipping out if she got homework after doing all day testing and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, it's like you said, more the mental emotion.
It's a mental and emotional break.
And like the actual task.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't a very hard task, but there was nothing left in the tank, yeah.
Yeah. Which I think, um, both of us having children in these grades that we're talking about, I think it's helpful to offer parental experience or things, so.
Um, the other thing that I don't, might be, again, might be a small thing or might be a future agenda item. As I was informed, they can't do breakfast for the select chorus anymore and I don't know if there's a way around that. Or maybe this is something just to reach out to-
So can't do breakfast for-
So, um, so middle school has a select chorus and they meet at seven AM on Tuesdays. In the fall, um, my daughter was very upset by missing breakfast, cause they, they eat breakfast. And, you know, there was a, a parent who made a comment, well, feed your kid at home then, you know, it's like, it, it's not a matter of feeding him, you know, it's the timing of eating, you know? So if you have to go to school a whole half hour earlier, some bodies aren't capable of eating that early. So we reached out to, um, the chorus teacher and the Melikan was very accommodating, the food services that they were going to provide a bag lunch for the kids to grab on their way in. Um, so that was great for the fall. And then they just started back up for the spring and we were informed that they will not be providing it anymore, because for resource, or-
So we, I'll follow up with Keith and Kyle Parsons and see what the challenges are.
Yeah, if they can do anything, even- She was, I guess, letting them out like five minutes early from chorus so then they could go eat.
And grab it.
Yeah, and that might be the case, well Kyle will probably tell you if that was the case for all the mornings. Cause there are other groups, other choruses, other bands that'd be first thing in the morning too, same thing. But yeah, I mean, I think it's good for the kids and it's good for the school if they're able to have access to that breakfast.
So definitely, I'll follow up with Keith and Kyle Parsons and see what the challenges are.
And, and then, since you mentioned food services, I mentioned it to Greg, um, there's a new, I don't know if it's like an app or a, a way of doing the meal.
The calendar.
The calendar, so there is no printable calendar anymore.
So we did follow up with that. If you look at, if you view it on your phone,
Yeah.
there's no printable option.
Yeah.
If you go onto the, the website, there is a little printer- If you go onto the website, there is a little printer button, you can print the menu.
So you have to be on a computer.
That's too bad.
Which most people, I'm sure most people weren't printing the menus from their phone.
I don't know. The only way I print is from my phone, the only way. Bluetooth to my otherwise, I, no.
I print from my phone a lot.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I don't think I've ever printed from my phone.
I printed from my daughter's tablet for the first time and was like, wha- what is this?
Cuz you always print from your computer.
I would be curious if, if there is that gap.
Keith has it.
Oh, yes, go for it Keith.
Yeah, I, I, I will check in to see if that function can be added, there is a lot of customizable pieces.
Yeah.
So I will look at whether the mobile version can add a print function and report back.
Yeah, because I went on the, the web link on the, on the phone, and it, it didn't have it. And then I was like, oh, well, there's an app, I'll download the app, the app will have it, and that didn't have it. And I did notice on Facebook that somebody did say something about printing it. And my daughter is, every, it hangs in the cabinet, and she looked at it, so she asked me what was for lunch. And so I, I ran through the whole week, I said, this is what it is, these are the days. You know, an hour later, what was that for lunch tomorrow? Okay, you know, it's every morning, so it's like, short of getting her the app.
So for the short term, if you go to the website, there is a printer icon, click, print it, and then Keith will look into making sure that functionality is added.
Possible, yeah.
If the functionality is not available, then do you think it's something that principals could add the PDF themselves to their weekly communications with parents? Weekly or monthly, however?
Yeah, the, yeah.
Or if, if not, if they can't add that, at least add, since it is like a new, like here's where the menu is, maybe add, if you go onto the webpage, you can print out the menu.
Yeah.
If it can't be created or.
I'm sure Keith will be able to find a solution, working with the provider.
I mean, some people do like to check daily on their things. I'm, somebody was like, I'm a type A and I like to have my calendar, my monthly food plan, and I was like, I like having it printed out.
Probably also a recap of town meeting.
Yes.
And at some point, you know, I guess we will meet the town administrator at the town meeting.
I will invite him to that, he apologized for not being, he had travel plans which were changed as a result of the weather, so he left early.
Okay.
I mean, he might wanna wait till June for a cake, I don't know.
Or we can have a cake for him.
We can have a cake, you come, we'll get the cake. Or charcuterie board. Change it up. Alright, approval of bills and payrolls, we're doing that online in a timely manner, right Bryce?
I'm gonna be better, I promise.
Audience sharing. Okay. No other business has come before us, so our next meeting will be Wednesday, May first. There was a talk about the combined meeting, that it's after, like, school gets out, and then it's like a week later as our final combined meeting. I don't have a problem with it being late, does anybody else have a problem having it be after school set out?
On the first.
So, so in June, no, in June, the June combined meeting is Thursday, the twentieth?
So the regional school committee meeting is on Wednesday, the nineteenth, the combined meeting is on Thursday.
And school, as long as tomorrow goes according to schedule.
What?
Then the last day of school is the week prior to it.
Yeah, it's the thirteenth.
My recommendation is to keep it as scheduled.
I think, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, since somebody did bring it up, that nobody else has an issue with having it.
The one thing we could do, and it would be up to the region, is if we connected it to the region of the meeting on the night.
Which I, I vote no on that, because it's such a long meeting, yeah. I mean, the last kind of.
Which I think we discussed at our, what was it, our December meeting?
Previous years, that's why we've always made it separate, just, we made it in the last couple of years separate, just because it is the, the evaluation of the superintendent, so.
Yeah, I think the discussion, someone brought it up, I was concerned about it being during summer vacation or something, but.
Well, that's what somebody was saying, I was like, it's a week. I think, I think.
Or if somebody's gone, they're gone, it's okay.
Yeah, I feel like, okay, so, so Northborough was on bu- on board with the.
And then, I'm just curious if region is even allowed to meet on the nineteenth, if it's a federal holiday?
No, it must not be on the nineteenth, it might be on the Monday, I'll have to.
Okay. Okay, cool, thank you.
Not anymore, they're not meeting now. Thanks Lauren. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Kristen, move.
Second.
Seconded by Lauren. Roll call, Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And myself, we adjourned at nine oh six, thank you so much.